The, the PCC brothers, regulars of the town's office bodies. And the first, uh, session about this month, I rather ask, first Monday of the month. So, to start, I would like to request our, specifically, target for the roll call and the presentation of court.
I want to do only one roll call. But you know, and, 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 and.
Uh, we're not, uh, uh, uh. The roll call just arrived, and Honorable, Dujungan, um, asked for the excuse. Uh, we will be attending the oral draft. But it will be, roll call, okay, you can touch up. For, um, national attention, I'd like to say, Monica, good evening. Okay, so given the number of present, uh, the Indian Bayan members, there, uh, you are ready to hear the call. Then, similarly, proceed with the approval of the order of business for today's session. Any motion please, Madam Chair? Honorable Polikar, I think for the approval of order of business for today's session, Madam Chair.
Siya, motion, Madam Chair.
Dujungan, any remarks, comments, objections? Kigerinan, the motion is approved. Any motion for the approval of the minutes for the first act, if you see the session?
Madam Chair.
Honorable, ampo.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good morning, Sanado. I move for the approval of previous minutes dated July 31, 2023, without any correction, Madam Chair.
Siya, Chair, Royal Chairman.
Uh, test people, and Dujungan, the minutes for July 31 session will be approved without any correction. Uh, any remarks, comments, objections? Or, no, sorry, session. Okay, so, the kigerinan, uh, motion is approved. We are now, uh, the privilege hour, or people's hour. So, we have this morning, our municipal engineer, Gretaita Canadero, for very important question. So, Maitita, uh, so.
Good morning, Vice, our preserving officer. But I'm, uh, my, my members, uh, may move to, uh, to, uh. It's a good morning, here, guarding at home, so, um, while, uh, because, uh, provincial government, you know, trust fund, worth with 2 million, 050,000. There was a realignment, uh, sometime in December or November, uh, out. Sometime in, uh, 2022, Resolution Number 22-0, uh, 09. I'm gonna, Siguro, Lingasahon, Lima, Hares, and Deacon, sir, Lima, August 7, 2023. The Sanlunian Bayan members, municipality of Padila, Missalis Occidental, through the Honorable Vice Mayor Estela Obotstanyo, Presiding Officer, uh, Sir, Mr. Davis. Greetings. This is reference to the amount of 2 million and 50,000 pesos from the development of Sanitari Land Field, of which funds came from the provincial government unit of Missalis Occidental. Please be informed that there was a request from my office that the amount they realigned to the opening of Gala Road for fuel, oil, and other expenses expenses of the 57th Engineering Brigade of the Philippine Army. I retracted our agreement because of the many months they were not able to mobilize their equipment. Furthermore, I wrote a letter to Good Life, the supplier of the fuel and oil, for that purpose to not continue supplying the accommodation items for purchase order number 22-12-32. And last July 17, this year, or 2023, Good Life answered she was willing to terminate the contract or purchase order, see attached letters. With this, I would like to request from this August value of yours, the Resolution Number 22-79, see attached copy of the resolution. Be again returned to the original project name of the funds taken from provincial government, uh, office, uh, development of Sanitari Land Field. Your cooperation on this matter is of great help to the development of our municipality. I am hoping for an immediate action as soon as possible time. Thank you, and more power to all of us. Very good, yours, uh, Samuel Arvidino, uh, Municipal Mayor.
No, uh, indicated proposal to answer the resolution for this morning?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Honorable, Madam Chair.
Yes, Vice.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, proposal, solution, uh, to give honor, the senior vice, that I got, that high honors, like, uh, a vegetarian and cloudy, and baggage.
Uh, Latin honors, like, high, high honors, or Latin?
Like, a vegetarian.
High honors. Sige, na, kagaya, ya.
Yeah, Captain.
Pan, ya.
Example, Madam Chair, when, uh, when there was a use, I go past, doctor, uh, Mister, a doctor, I help when, I go, who represented, and university representatives Manila, who's a vegetarian, at Paris Nursing. And one also, Madam Chair, uh, Alicia Marie, so, Sparros, the Sparros, graduated from Laudy and the mentality, intelligence university.
Sige, so, panan, buha, or?
Oh, na, may lai, Madam Chair.
Uh, sige. Okay, so, there's a motion from Honorable Mixgon, uh, for a proposed resolution, uh, recognizing, or, uh, honoring, uh, honoring the, the Villanian who graduated with high honors, or Latin, uh, honors, no? So, whoever garnered that, uh, academic achievement, no, will be given the resolution. Okay, so, any, any second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, seconded, any remarks, comments, objections? Kigerinan?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, clarification, uh, Madam, Madam Chair, uh, if, if, uh, mga tagtao, uh, Madam Chair, ato lang po siguro, namatay mga kaesuunan po siguro, uban nga, wala talaga, talaga, balok, basilo mahingo niyang historahanan, uh, pilarang matagahan, hindi dun ay lai nga sama-sama ng anak na, na, nakakuha, okay, kung, uh, but ato lang po, ma, Madam Chair.
Initay lang, ma.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Madam Chair, that's why I said, example lang po si Latin. So, plus, that is also, do, do get that, ano?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
May, may, uh, may, no, atong, mo, ano, siya, title, no, uh, sa, Sanlunian Bayan, uh, Sanlar, it's, uh, uh, war. May ito ba, ito, lai, but, may mga, na, bilang, po limit sa akademik, akademik, diba? Bilang, po, akademik, pwede po siya sports, kung minsan, siya, so, may, wala na lang, ginawa siya, oh. Uh, pwede siyang idraw na lang po, or, na? Honorable Mixgon, para, may parameters, ba, inside, kagaan, inside, inside, never you can, you know? Na, kung once mo, honey, daddy, kadaan, uh, yun, taga, the commission, sa Sanlunian Bayan, Sanlar, uh, or something. Yung, wala na lang, nagidraw, uh, ala na lang, so, that will be a proposed resolution. Uh, hi, yung, motion for first reading, na lang, by next time? Para magmitin, yung.
Okay, I hope this resolution, um, coordination, Madam Chair.
Yeah, coordination, na lang.
Then, you can do it, uh, first, for, first reading.
Siya, Madam Chair, thank you.
So, siya, seconded, any remarks, comments, objections? Yung, kigerinan, the motion is approved. For first reading, and to the committee, uh, resolution. Next, uh, petitions and requests, I'd read, I'd pay. Then, I'd be, will be the reverse of the, namin, okay, diha, uh, siya, go ahead.
Uh, Letter A, letter from Alferi, Delia, and Katie, a municipal health officer, requesting for adoption of national administrative orders, guidelines, and policies at the City Health Office of Disaster Risk Reduction and Health. Title of the administrative orders, guidelines, and policies are listed under request. And Letter B, letter from the municipal mayor, Samar El Farino, dated August 7, 2023, requesting this August value, the Resolution Number 22-309, be again returned to the original project name of the funds, taken from PGO, the development of Sanitari Land Field.
Okay, I can hang?
Uh, Madam Chair, I can hang. Uh, I move, I would like to request, uh, that this letter request of Dr. Ral Magda will be tackled by the Committee on Disaster, in which also the chairman of the Committee on Health is also a member. Um, and I think it's up to the chairman of the, the Committee on Disaster, if he join, he would like to jointly include the rest of the members of the Committee of Health. Hence, I move, Madam Chair.
Okay, in a second.
Siya.
Dujungan, any remarks, comments, objections?
I will, sir.
Yeah, okay. Kigerinan, the motion is approved. Preferably, to join motion.
Sorry, Madam Chair, uh, my paper, my corral, eh, there is a disaster, sir. And then, this is for a team, team, uh, sayo, desa, sa team, sayo, it's you. So, sayo, this is, uh, related, pero, you are, uh, uh, sayo, na response team, sa, sa, it's you. You, here, nasa.
Pero, disaster risk reduction management, you know?
You, you.
Laki, join.
Eh, join, desa, join.
Join, let's, let's, join, because, yung, disaster, yun, na, mo, be eaten, hell, be, funny, desa, money, eto, ni, uh, sakalang, sa, uh, pero, money, siya, kato lang, uh, the main, wala, no, di, apro, appropriate, na, office, na, mga, sparehead, po, kung, ri, ri, sa, simple, pero, the whole disaster DRL, yun, 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 magkabahin, na, yun, uh, uh, if ever, yun, mga calamity, not pertaining to, yun, yun, mga health disaster. Okay, so, join Committee on Health and Disaster, uh, DRL Committee. Okay, so, other communications, wala?
Madam Chair, uh, the letter request of Honorable Mayor.
Ay, ah, ah, yes, na.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so, I move for a joint resolution. Uh, the letter request of Honorable Mayor, the amount of 2 million, uh, 50, uh, funded, uh, by funded by the provincial government, uh, back to the original name of the project, Madam Chair.
Okay, are there any objections?
Do, do.
Yeah, no objection? Okay, so, hereby, approve, the motion. Uh, Committee reports, Committee and laws?
Not yet, wala, wala, na, for, Madam Chair, wala, talaga, put it, last, eh, eh, Madam Chair, eh, last week, uh, Naga, and, uh, Cervan, Madam Chair, like, dirt, roll it out.
Sige, okay, uh.
We'll skip, uh, uh.